I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role?
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Council of Corvus President.
Approval of minutes.
May 2nd, 2023.
Got a motion.
So moved.
Seconded by Alderman Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, I'd like to call the mayor up to introduce the New York State Odyssey of the Mine champions from Presidential Park and Monhegan Middle School.
Yes, congratulations once again to the champions. And once again, we're here to honor them with keys to the city and in some cases for the three repeaters, since they already have the key, we have some flowers for them. But we're so proud and we wanted to, as a city, as a community, express our congratulations to them for winning the New York State championship and all their efforts in the Worlds and let them know that this community is very proud of their efforts and pretty proud of their success in representing the Middletown School District, you know, the Middletown-Walkhill area. So we're going to call them up one by one with a proclamation for each and also with a key to the city. And Rick, will you be helping out with that? Or Miguel's going to come down also. So we'll be calling them up and as your names called, please come up and then we'll stand for a group photo if you don't mind.
Put a cheer, Joe.
Yeah, first one, Addison Strenfield.
Next is Alexa Kazak. And the last, this is last from this group?
Yep.
Last from this group is Jaylen Hart.
One more. All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next group is from Presidential. Rick's not doing it. I brought flowers. Camilla Chalito. We're going to go to the school tomorrow. All right? Congratulations.
Everybody smile. One more. There you go.
So if we could, we have the coaches come up and say a few words about the experience, if you'd like. All represented?
So we just wanted to thank the City of Middletown, Mayor DiStefano, the Common Council for recognizing the wonderful work that these girls did from both Presidential Park and Monhegan. We were the coaches from Monhegan, but we are so proud of all of the girls from both teams. It was great to see them compete at Regionals. Both teams won first place at States and then all their hard work at Worlds. So we are very proud of you.
Anyone, any of the parents want to say a few words or feel free to come up? You do? No? Okay, here you go. That's it. So thank you, congratulations once again.
Thank you. Dismissed. I don't want to say dismissed, but you don't have to stay for our long meeting. You guys are welcome to leave.
All right, for the good of the city, anyone else would like to address the council?
Yes, I would.
Please step forward.
Hi, my name is Gail Jeter and I'm here as a representative of a group that is working to activate the Middletown NAACP. The NAACP is not exclusively African-American. All are welcome. The NAACP is nonpartisan as well. We will be focusing on working together with one another as well as our elected officials for racial equality, for economic empowerment, for, to improve health, to improve education through resources and programs that are available, and to educate the members regarding political awareness. We're inviting those who would like to participate. We have a website, an email now for those who are interested, and our email is ocnaacpmiddletown@gmail.com. Our next meeting is actually June 26th. It is on Zoom. So if you know someone who is interested, they can email me or actually a couple of folks here do know me, so, you know, they can contact me if there's someone who would be interested. I think it'll be very good for the city as well as the county. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anywhere else would like to address the council? All right, remarks to the mayor.
I'm so glad I'm leaving the chair there, annoyed Mr. Massey to the point where he had to get up and...
Well, I want to give an update on some of the matters, but once again reinforce
our pride in the students' success and congratulate the Middletown School District on commitment to that project, the Odyssey of the Mines. I know for years I remember Goshen winning all the time and I was wondering what happened. The Middletown even compete in it and I don't know if they did or not, you know, 10, 15 years ago, but certainly over the last few years, there's been a lot of success with that program and a lot of pride to the community and a lot of pride you could see in the faces of the kids. So moving on to the number one issue around the city is construction around, in and around the downtown area and not only the Middletown part, but the East Main Street part that is not in Middletown, but in the town of Walkhill and the traffic delays and so let's separate the two. One, East Main Street is not the City of Middletown construction project. That is the Orange Rockland replacing utility line, gas lines to make everybody safe and but there is a huge traffic backups at times down there. So if you can avoid East Main Street during the day, heading out of the city, I would do so. But in the general downtown area, we continue to move forward with the construction project. They are now pouring more sidewalks and we're hoping to get more sidewalks closed up as we move forward. I know the council president will have a question or two for the Commissioner of Public Works under his comments and I'm looking forward to the responses. In regards to the ONW, we did receive another extension on the bid for the Phase 1, which is the structural and the mitigation of the environmental issues, and we did receive, move another step forward in regards to formation of the LLC that is necessary for us to acquire the, or to sell tax credits for the project and that will bring us up closer to that 20-plus million dollar number. We also are happy to announce that we did receive, and I may have said it at the last meeting, a $1.8 million Restore New York grant for the ONW and that again is closing that gap on the necessary funds that once we get by Phase 1 structural and environmental mitigation, then we'll be into the permanent financing stage and bidding the second part of the, of the project. So it's progress and I know we all were hoping it would have gone quicker, but several factors kicked in place, including probably about a 40% increase in cost and also, you know, all the things related to construction problems that we know with staffing and, but the main thing here was the federal and state tax credits, historic tax credits. So we're that much closer. We are now, I know Maria's been on and Jacob has been on meetings with CNS engineers, the Syracuse firm that is overseeing the project, and we have a meeting coming up, I believe, this Thursday to get the final updates and hopefully the, set the pace for heading home and finishing the project. Play Togs is also another project that we're hearing a lot of about. The only approval that was given at Play Togs was for a distributor of Amazon-type products. It's not an Amazon distributor, but my understanding is the project has, that project has gone by the wayside, but they are continuing to do the improvements on the building that they feel will make the building marketable for some type of use. A lot of people, you know, that had some issues or some, not a lot, some people have had issues with approving that type of use on Dulson Avenue and I can tell you that we have to, we have to face the reality of zoning and the Play Togs building is Zone I-1 or I-2, I think it's I-1 or I-1A, which is light industrial. And if we change the Play Togs building from light industrial to commercial or residential, you're going to see a huge explosion of residential development along that strip and that is something that I don't think, I know I don't support, but I don't know what your individual opinions are on the matter, but we felt the safest thing to do as an administration was not to make a request to change the zoning from industrial to keep it at a light industrial where we control the planning process, emissions, traffic and all those through the planning board process. The project that was approved had a maximum of 16 trucks, which that road can, you know, it's a five-lane road, can handle very easily. What project comes in after that, I don't know. Maybe that old one gets revived because it is approved, but the positive part is the building is being reconstructed. It had very low ceilings and so it wasn't very attractive for many types of uses. It's a large building, I think well over 200,000 square feet and as you can see by the vacancies in different parts of commercial strips, buildings like that are just not conducive to retail anymore. They're, they're, the old uses are not viable uses in the future. So we have to be careful when some people have, you know, made recommendations about future uses of the property, we have to be very careful on how we handle that with zoning and I think remaining as an industrial use is probably the best interest of the city. The Heritage Trail, we have been having numerous meetings regarding the trail. The final design coming from East Main to, out through downtown to Ingrasia Road is still being worked on by HVEA, the contractors hired by the county. We still need to purchase after some meetings with them, some widening of some of the right of ways heading out the downtown and, but I believe the, it's very close also on that project with the final design. Our goal from the city perspective, and I know the engineer's perspective, is to get everything in place this year and approved and then hopefully have a construction season in '24. That's for the, for the trail coming through. Now you can see it's already segmented. You have a piece of the trail built back here. You're going to have East Main through the Robert Street or Orchard Street will also probably be constructed separately and then the other part, the confusing part or the complicated part goes from East Main Street out through West Main Street and outside the city. So, so that's the section we're still working on is East Main to West Main and hopefully that's going to be resolved. Middletown, oh, the Amies, Amies Project. Amies Project is still on hold. We have been meeting with the town of Goshen and getting updates from them on the project. It's still in the Orange County Partnership. The project is still an active project. Amies is still spending money on it. My last I heard was they may have downsized the project a bit, but there are some contractual obligations that Amies has to the city regarding the water taking and we'll be meeting with them in the, in the near future to discuss a possible extension. I believe we did it once already, Jacob, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we extended it once because of COVID and we're going to now meet with them again to see what their timeline is and, and make sure that, you know, that there's a possibility that we may get paid for whatever water they are contracting for or a portion of that water and to also downsize their demand. If the project size is downsized from 300,000 gallons a day to 150,000 gallons a day, then we need to free up that 150,000 gallons a day for other use. So we'll be meeting with Amies to get a timeline and with the Orange County Partnership. I did confirm with Maureen Hallahan that the project is still a viable, active project, so that's, that's the positive part. Other notes, I know Jerry, you were asked about the courthouse and I don't know how many of you are around City Hall during the daytime, but I know many of you do come here in and out, but if you notice, there are police cars here from everywhere. Port Jervis, not only Walkhill, but many communities within the county.
I'm just going to be waiting just another minute to get started with our webinar tonight. Gases and fuel, it's very awkward. We're just waiting for the filter and who are waiting in the lobby a little.
Oh, it's okay. I thought somebody was talking to me over the, hearing voices. But, but basically these courthouses have now, the city courthouses have become regional courthouses and we're doing arraignments. We're handling a lot of cases that are from the surrounding townships and that's a decision made by the New York Office of Court Administration to utilize the full-time courtrooms and to, I'm assuming it's in the best interest of the New York State Court System that they're doing so, but at the same time, they're trying to shift that burden of providing facility totally to us. So we've put the project on hold because of the estimates came in much, much higher than we anticipated and the engineers had projected and we're trying to convince the state through our consultants that they need to pitch in a pretty heavy penny here in order for us to build this joint courtroom removed from the Middletown City Hall and a police station onto, onto Robert Street, I mean, South Street. And my position is that if they don't do that, at some point, we need to move on from the South Street project and maintain the order in which we've been doing for the last seven or eight years when they put the mandate on us. The second courtroom that they mandated is this room here. It's not used during the day. They have security set up. Operationally, the state does not like it because they have to have a second security team in, but, so they all have to do a cost-benefit analysis of whether adding extra security is worth it versus the, having the, two courtrooms together on South Street and to a newer facility. But I'm not going to ask the Middletown taxpayers to put up, you know, five and a half to six million dollars to build a court facility for the state of New York that is used by most communities in Orange County, at least on a regular basis from what I see. I know they're not here just having coffee. There, I see prisoners being brought in, people being, you know, parking in the bank. Yesterday morning, bringing in prisoners, I see state police bringing in prisoners and, and that's all well and good and that's the operation of the court is fine, but don't expect Middletown taxpayers to bear that burden of the, of the physical construction cost of the building. So we're hoping to get a final answer from them. I don't know if we will. I'm sure that at some point they may challenge us with the mandate that they gave us, but I think we feel pretty good knowing that we're providing them with a second facility now, this room. It's not utilized five days a week. It's not even utilized two or three days a week full. It's used part-time and to ask Middletown ta, or not to ask, because if they ask, the answer is no, but to mandate us to build this facility for them and then have it be regionally used doesn't make sense to me because based on our numbers alone, we don't need it. So, but the, that would be the decision, I think, of the court and possibly could end up in litigation, I don't know, but we'll, we'll see where that goes. We spoke about the speed issues in the committee meeting. I appreciate the chairman giving me two minutes of that meeting. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, but, and I expressed my concern that I think the answer is all of the above. It's not just one or two things and I don't believe it's just enforcement because I think it's not reasonable. Andrew, you gave the example of Montgomery. Montgomery's basically one road in, one road out and it's much easier to enforce. It's not, it's not East Main, Monhegan and all these other streets. So cameras are a possibility if, and I believe Sparrow may be right, it used to be the state had to authorize them, but cameras are also going to catch you and you and you going 35 miles an hour and, and I don't mean you personally, I mean your neighbors and they have a, they have a downside to them too, where you, all of a sudden government is all over. They do. They have a downside when you're going, you're... It's not, if someone going 35 miles an hour is not a criminal. That's, that's not the case, but there are, there are, and that's why police have discretion when they do these things. We do find that most speeders in neighborhoods are people that live in the neighborhoods. Most speeders on Monhegan, Eisenhower, Highland, maybe California, West Main or way beyond that, East Main are not neighborhood people. Those are, because those are high-volume areas. So my thoughts are we should focus on those main boulevards and see what the solutions are and possibly on those roads, cameras may be an answer. But, but I don't, I don't ignore the fact that there are other ways of, which other communities have used traffic calming in order to slow down the traffic and, but again, that'll be your decision, what you want to fund and when you want to fund it. And I believe I covered everything that I wanted to touch on. Jerry, did you have any questions? Did I miss anything? I know you sent me...
Maybe an update on the Psych Center.
Yeah, the Psych Center is, we did hear back from the state on why we haven't closed on acquiring those properties and they did give us an amended timeline to mid to late summer. The latest problem was the tunnels that, specifically one tunnel that goes from Tuckerman to Schmitz and how that tunnel is going to be closed off and I believe that's been resolved. The last email that I received, or that Alex received from, from the state, that's been resolved. It's now being presented to the seven agencies that have to sign off and then we'll go to the Attorney General for the final approval. They said that timeline should be mid to late summer. And mid to late summer, I'll probably be here saying to you, they now tell us it's going to be around Halloween because this has been seven years.
Christmas.
Seven years, but based on the paper, it looks like we're getting closer. Paperwork that's coming through.
Alderman Green?
Thank you, yeah, mayor. There was one other question and Jerry, I don't know if you had sent it or not, and I don't know if you can comment on it, about a parking structure and the location?
Yes.
Where we might put it. I know there was different ideas being thrown around.
We had, we had multiple locations based on certain projects. We're working with Senator Scoofa's office to finalize the location. We're trying to coordinate with him, but within the next week or two to have it announced, but before the announcement is made, we will be sharing it with you and, but I'll be sharing with you privately, but I can't share it publicly at this point because it's, the final decision has been made, but the, it's a two and a half million dollar grant, we do know that. And, and the garage, the structure will be built in phases. Phase one will be, we'll handle, we'll increase our parking by about 70 to 90 cars and then Phase 2 and Phase 3 can go up to a couple hundred cars, but right now we're focusing on Phase 1.
Thank you. Alderman Joshua Swah?
Yes, I had the opportunity to attend Juneteenth celebration, which was excellent and I know you were there too. I know far as I believe, there's, out of 50 states, there's 20 states that's on board far as a paid holiday and I know New York State is one of them.
Yep.
But on that day, New York, City of Middletown employees was operating. Can you kind of elaborate?
Sure. Sure. City, and Orange County was also open and other communities throughout the state were open. The state does recognize it as a holiday, federal holiday, and gives state employees the day off. Under, you know, different communities contractually handle time off differently. For example, I might believe in New York City, one of the unions there, they get 36 days a year, combined vacation, sick, personal, they get X amount of days per year and they can appropriate it out. We, you know, and not all employees in the city take off on holidays. For example, police, fire, and I believe even shift workers still work their regular schedule and, but that being said, so you have about half the employees are maybe daily employees, Monday through Friday, and the other half are shift workers of 24... Monday through Friday, and the other half are shift workers, are 24/7 workers. The contract for the City of Middletown identifies 13 federal, or 13 holidays that the employees get paid for. Those 13 are made up over the years by designating basically federal holidays and making them, identifying them by name in the contract. So, for example, when you had President's Day, you had Lincoln's Birthday, and you have Washington's Birthday, both in the month of February. The federal, they were both contractual days for city employees. When the federal government consolidated those two holidays and made them one holiday, the city employees still enjoyed Lincoln's Birthday and Washington's Birthday off. So, they get Lincoln's Birthday because, and it's not a federal holiday. And they also get the other one. So, they get 13 holidays. We go to them each year, even in non-contract years, and say to them, what holidays? We all know the typical ones, the Christmas, the Easter, not Easter because Easter's a Sunday, but Christmas and July 4, Thanksgiving, you know, is always a set date. But, so we say to them, what 13 holidays do you want off? I started emailing them and requesting of them prior to even becoming a federal holiday, saying, why don't we look at shifting from Lincoln's Birthday as one of the 13 and making Juneteenth one of the 13? They said no. They said, we want another day. And I said, no, that's not going to happen. You get 13 days. I think that's, it's not like you're at like 10 or nine below the federal holiday. There's, I believe, 11 national holidays.
Six.
Well, whatever the number is. They exceed the amount of federal holidays that you have. So, it's their choice. We've told employees, if they want to take off, they could take off. You know, they can use any kind of time they want. But it's up to the union, and I think they're just playing hardball, looking for some public feedback, saying why they have to work on, you know, City Hall, why do they have to work on the federal holiday? Now, I'm gonna give you another example. A few years back, maybe within the last 10 years, Election Day was a day off for city employees. It was identified in the contract as a day off. They then decided, hey, we would rather have the day after Thanksgiving off, giving us a four-day holiday. So, we now identify the Friday, that Black Friday, right, as the fourth day, as a four-day weekend for the city employees, which is fine. Now, there's discussion about making Election Day a federal holiday again. So, one of my early discussions with them, I say, hey, if that happens, we're gonna flip it back. They said, no, no way. So, now we're not, now we're going towards 15 holidays potentially for the employees. So, when I spoke yesterday at the Juneteenth, I mentioned to the people there is, they need to get involved, not only in government, they need to get involved in their unions to celebrate these days. That union, the CSEA, that's who dictates it because it doesn't affect police, it doesn't affect fire for the day off because they worked a regular schedule days. It only affects CSEA. And that's how we settle the holidays in the city. That union should recognize that Juneteenth is important enough to the people in the City of Middletown, to their employees, that they should make that one of the 13 holidays that they get. Paying them for another holiday is probably well over $100,000 in cost to us. And like I said, it's not like we don't, you know, we're pretty chintzy on giving of time. We, there's 13 paid holidays that they get. Pick one of them, take any one you want. You want to take away Columbus Day, take away Columbus Day. I don't care which one you take. But take away the, whatever, if you want, if you want to celebrate Juneteenth, then do it in a manner that, that's been within the confines of the 13 days off.
Thank you for the explanation.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Mayor, just going back to the sidewalks. So, you know, we going back and forth with the text messages. East Main Street, my area, 86 East Main Street started in June. A dumpster rolled up, and they started jackhammering last June by the corners. It sat there, by middle of July or beginning of July, I text Jacob and I said, Jacob, every day I come to work or I'm seeing at my shop that there's a sidewalk being teared up, there's something put in there. And it went June, July, August, September, October. In November, I was told my sidewalk was gonna be done. It wasn't dumped, they dumped stone and closed off on November 15, my sidewalk. So, everyone in my shop was told, if you go to Home Depot, get a 50-pound bag of salt, let's dump it on there. Watch kids and adults go onto East Main Street, go around to Academy Avenue because the sidewalk was closed. April, started back up again. It was almost every day. They even found bones. I had to call the police chief, they found, they called the ME's office, they tight, blocked off, and they keep putting close, 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 close. So, been going back and forth with Jacob since last July. I spoke to Josh today from Voice, and I spoke to WSP, I think that's the lady's name from the company, the engineering company that watches Voice and everything. And they brought up concerns, you know? Josh admits that there is issues. Josh said that our communication with the business owners, that it was none.
By our, you're saying Voice is communicating.
Voice.
Yes.
Yes, Josh admits, he's the executive principal, VP, whatever his job is. I have people, and I kept telling people, like, listen, I know we're going through, we're going through this, we see sidewalks, or the new sidewalks are on. And right in front of my place, after I said it to Jacob, I said, Jacob, please make sure that the telephones are done and everything. In the winter, here comes Orange Rockland, I got a new telephone pole. So, I got two telephone poles, I got a new hole in the sidewalk and everything. We, Josh admits, sidewalks were, parking spots are gone. Some owners have now shared driveways. They have not communicated with the owners of the business, the landlords, anybody. And, you know, and then to listen to today, and I called the lady from WSP, and she's saying that she has multiple reports, multiple reports of what the stuff is going on. And she said, you're right. I said, look, you're, you're on East Main Street, tearing up East Main Street, but then you're on South Street, tearing up South Street. And then you're going on to Fulton Street. Now, you're on Academy. Now, you're on West Main, you're Fulton, you're paving. We paved a month ago, the lines are not there. Lines at CVS, two cars pull up and two cars go straight. If you're out of town, you don't know where you're going, it's a left-hand turn, but it doesn't, it's not marked, there's no temporary signs. Again, Josh admits it. The thing I don't like is last week, we're going back and forth, me, you, and Jacob, and the foreman or the VP of Operations said he came to my shop and said that, what is your busiest day? Your busiest day is Friday. All right, we're gonna avoid Friday and everything. I have camera in my office, and I have a Ring camera in my office. So, if the regular camera doesn't catch it, the Ring camera catches it. All he said was, I'm Mike from Voice, have Miguel give me a call. And he sat there in front of me and Jacob and said, I asked your employee, what was your busiest day and whatever. Back on Friday, once again, they were back, blocked my entrance again. Two deliveries I could not get. I had to put my pregnant secretary at the, at the, at the car, at the gas station and redirect people to Academy Avenue. WSP today said, there was issues last year, she stopped. She said, the reason why the sidewalk was closed was because she told them that she was not gonna allow them to pave it because it was below 30 degrees and the sidewalk was gonna be destroyed or whatever. She also said that there is a $1.2 million issue with the wrong material that they used, and they're asking for forgiveness, and they're having issues. She also said that, because I asked her, because I was like, you know, I see so many different people, every day, there's a different crew. And like, you know, like you try to go out there, like, hey, what are you guys doing out there today? What are we doing? You know, like, you're blocking off my entrance, you're putting a dumpster in my driveway. Like, today, they parked the loader with material in my driveway. So, I said, what are you guys doing? Oh, we don't know, we're just, we're just told. And then I was told that it was too hot last July and August, so they walk off the, off the thing. So, I think this Merck is the certified payroll, there was issue with the certified payroll. So, the lady said from WSP, saying that, you know, I can come, my, my, you know, my engineering company could come to the council meeting and let you guys know that we have tried to stop Voice from doing all this stuff, and we're still, you know, we're still dealing with them, and nothing is happening. So, I just say, listen, I hope my area is done, but I feel for the business owners, I feel for people that, you know, they paved a week, a month ago, and it's all about materials, about timing, it's about their vendor, it's about the people who are supposed to strike. It, I think it's a safety issue. It's just a simple thing of where, and point an arrow and paint over or something. So, you know, I know we're trying, and I've told this to other business owners, they come down, they're like, hey, what are they doing to my sidewalks? I'm saying, look online, it's, call, call the city, we're trying to give everybody, we're gonna get better sidewalks, it's gonna look good. The condition, railroad right now, anybody can go right now, railroad and East Main Street, they poured a new, a new sidewalk. The lady said, go look at it, it's two inches thick. A sidewalk should not be, a new sidewalk should not be two inches-
What lady told you that?
The WSP lady.
They're the people that are supposed to be insuring-
And they're writing it up.
They're the reason, I don't know, I'm not there when WSP is talking to you, but WSP is a, is a national company, they're big, traffic operation company. They are the people that we hire to manage the project. We don't manage the project, and there are state DOT rules, there are contracts that everyone has to abide by. So, I don't, I don't know, I do know your place is opened up specifically early, and it wasn't completed. I know in other areas, things were opened up but could not be completed because of different issues. For example, some parts of downtown, basements were underneath the sidewalks, so they had to reconsider and re-engineer. And you'll notice on, on North Street, some of the sidewalks were not done again because they would have had to be done, restructure, the structural issues related to that. But Jacob's gonna have to come up and give you the explanation on what is happening. I know he's expressed to everyone that's asked that he's not happy with the fact that they, he's not making excuses for them, let me put it that way. What the solutions are, or what our regress is, I don't know. We, you know, if you want the attorneys to look at it, if WSP is telling you-
I've spoken to them-
I don't know how they're certifying a sidewalk because they don't get paid unless WSP certifies it. So, if they have somebody in the field that's telling you that the sidewalk that they poured is inadequate, yet they're submitting paperwork to the state DOT that, for reimbursement, then that will probably be, would be a criminal matter. But I don't, I don't know who you're talking to at WSP, but I'm sure Jacob can come up and he can address the issues with you. We knew it was gonna be a problem. I think Jacob did address some of it with us, a group the other day, about how contractors work regarding these types of things with some contractors and coordinating multiple subs because why they're in the, moving of telephone poles. You notice you got IBW there, you've got other, other trades, there's like four or five trades working the deal. So, but I'm not a contractor, I can't put a nail into a wall. So, I will let Jacob come up and give you, give you the answers to that.
Good evening. And the council president, he has every right to be frustrated about, about East Main and Academy, that location. They ripped out the sidewalk too, too soon, and they could not, there was an issue with the design of that intersection. So, who told who when? You know, them and the engineers are saying, well, you know, should have, you know, we wanted to build it, we were ready to go. And now the engineer said, hold off, we have to do something with this intersection, we have to move things around, and that happens. So, it's very unfortunate, I cannot defend it. I told the council president that in front of the mayor a million times, I cannot defend it. I called Voice. I told Voice in front of the council president that you cannot defend that, and they were trying to defend it and be offended, that one person, one VP from Voice, and I put him in his place, I believe. And he's very, he's a very good person. I mean, he's trying his best. It's a very complicated project, it doesn't justify anything that they have not done right. There's no justification. I told him, if you don't think the project is not buildable, rip out the plans and let's go to court and say, listen, I can't build this project because the design is not, is not effective. So, that being said, I'm 100% with you, I'm not happy about it at all. That lady from WSP, when she told you the asphalt cannot be applied because the temperature was cold and this and that, we're talking about temporary asphalt. Temporary asphalt could have been applied. Yes, the DOT is extremely stringent. For her to tell you that there is two inches of sidewalk instead of four inches, you know, and, and what is she doing there? That's her job.
So, I think that's a great idea. So, I think we should bring, and we, the council deserves, I mean, what's this, like a $22 million project?
Thirty million dollars.
Thirty million dollars, right? So, doesn't the council deserve to hear from, from the people? Like, she's our, we're paying them, we're paying them to inspect it, we're, she says she has multiple reports, we can go to her office on Dulson Avenue, right by the physical therapy, and we can read all the stuff that she says she's been submitting to you and the city that the Voice is incompetent and they can't do the job.
She's not right. She's absolutely off the wall with this comment.
All right, well, then, we need to find out.
Absolutely. She's absolute, or Lisa, her name is, most likely. She's an inspector, I demand, I require, I don't want to talk about this in public about persons. I have, I have, I have certain issues.
It's troubling when she's saying that their certified payroll wasn't correct, when their $1.2 million wrong material that she questioned it, and they're asking for free, they're asking for forgiveness because they used the wrong material of $1.2 million.
It's not forgiveness, it's before DOT to be approved, and she knows it. Her boss is before DOT to approve this material.
And she has plenty of cracks that we, we seen it, we all seen it, across the street from De Felipe's, there's cracks, there's broken sidewalks already, and she has a whole bunch of reports that they continue, continue to pour new floor, you know, new sidewalks, and they continue to crack and break.
But she has, she's the one who orders the lab. The lab is there taking samples. She is there witnessing the compaction. She is there measuring the depth. She is there, and when I'm saying she, she, there's a team of four, four, we're paying over a million dollars for WSP. And for their representative to come in there and just throw all these things out there. The mayor, by the way, he's aware, not aware, I share with him every little thing that happened in that job. We're not sitting there sleeping. We know about the material. They go blaming WSP, they're blaming the previous inspectors that were on the job for the past year. It's still ultimately WSP's responsibility. I explained that to her a million times and to her bosses, okay? She's refusing, I mean, she's a good person, and she's refusing to understand the situation that is taking place. It's her responsibility. When she sees something two inches, shame on her for not stopping them and having them to remove right away. She's, she's our eyes and ears. I am there almost every day to solve problems. Because they say, the mayor was with me, Alder Meneses was with me, they designed stuff, they built stuff I'm not happy with. And I'm trying to catch it, I'm trying, today I spend, I spend my over, over half of my day with them because they want us to, all of a sudden, remove, relocate water line. This morning, we relocated a fire hydrant to try to, the project work, to try to make the project work. Everything is just redesigned. Now, it is a complicated project. It is an old city. You're running $30 million in almost every street in the city. Honestly, I have not had part, I mean, there are, there are some complaints, okay? Our office did not receive that many complaints. They did not receive that many complaints at all. DPW, usually people call us, you missed our garbage, you missed a twig in our, in the street, we, there's dead animal, we have not-
We don't have to say you didn't receive it. Josh, the, you know, second-in-command, said he received it. And he said he felt bad because there was no communication. Hey, we're starting today, we're gonna start ripping out your sidewalk. Hey, you're losing your parking spots anymore because we're putting new sidewalks. Hey, you no longer have a regular driveway, you have a shared driveway. Josh admitted that today to me when I spoke to him. So, he had complaints, they're calling Voice.
One shared driveway in there, it was technically not feasible- One shared driveway in there. It was technically not feasible to have, it was separate driveways coming in. There is was a knob of a sidewalk and a curb in between. WSP and boys, including Josh, knows that it is not feasible to separate the sideways because by the time you have ADA approach to the high area to separate the two sidewalk, the two driveways from each other, you can't, you can't. It's just going to be far, far apart. You can't do it. Boys said that. We discussed that today. We've been discussing it. Our Lisa, she's running around with this for, 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 running around. Everybody knows it. We discussed it today in the construction meeting. We knew the solution, it cannot physically be done. So the solution was for boys, Josh was sitting in the meeting today. He knows what the solution, he proposed the solution to go meet with the owner and give him white line in there to separate the two driveways because otherwise, because the two driveways, they were joined together after the entrance. Okay. That's why this is a 30 million dollar project about miles and miles and miles of the city. We expect problems and, and, and problems have been happening. We've been addressing them. WSP has been, has been working with us very closely. The mayor has been working with us. We've been pushing along as far, as, as much as we can, as fast as we can. Your inter, the intersection of East Main Academy, right across from central firehouse can defend it. I told boys and I screamed at them in front of your face, in front of you, excuse me, in front of you, telling them that you cannot defend this. Don't tell him this. He's a businessman or these businesses, but it's fortunately, the project is moving along. They have to take on, we have three phases of the project. NEXEL is being sent out. The, the, the schedule is on our website. NEXEL was sent out this afternoon about the striping that you just mentioned. They're going to be striping tonight and tomorrow night and the, and the, and the night after hopefully, you know, hopefully not Thursday night, but possibly Thursday.
We paved East Main Street and North Street a month ago. Do you think it's right not to stripe a line down the middle?
They, they have, they have, no, there are lines down the middle. There, there are.
There's little spots.
Yes, that's what all contractors do until you do, until you have the subcontractor.
It keeps going and going. So.
I understand that.
Even for East Main Street, for me to get, because according to Mike, when we spoke last week, the reason why he can't, um, do the sidewalk was because the parts were not ordered. And if we didn't go back and forth, it would not get done. It was not going to get done. It was on schedule. He told me it was on schedule because he was ordering, he was ordering, uh, something was on backorder. So I was like, listen, I don't care about the sidewalk. I lived like that already from June of last year. You close it in November 15th. I don't care about the sidewalk, but when you put barricades and you're giving me an eight foot entrance, people on East Main Street can't do the swing on their car and come into my place. They could not. And I just say, this is what drives me all day long. And I'm like, I have to say to the other people, like, hey, this is because it's going to benefit us. The city's going to look beautiful. Hang in there. But it's to the point where now it's every day. And you sat there. You said Friday is your busiest day? I said, I don't know. Who's told you that? Oh, your secretary did. Okay. What happened Friday? They came back again.
And it came back again? No, because, because we did not decide. Because we did not decide that day. Uh, they, they said they consulted in front of you because I said, who did you talk to? You said you consulted with this business. Who did you talk to? He said, yes. I talked to this lady in there and she told me which one is my busiest day and so on. And he said, no, it's not my busiest day. And then, but listen, we can, we can, we can, you know, we're sending NEXEL all the time. Uh, you know, like the mayor was saying, we're trying to inform the people all the time. Uh, today we sent NEXEL about fire hydrant that has to be relocated because of the project. Um, it's, it's a tough project. Nobody, you can't please everybody with this project. There are mistakes, no question about it.
You sent two NEXEL, one for the fire hydrant and one for striping.
That's today.
Yeah, that's it.
No.
We have not sent, well, I haven't got anything about East Main Street.
I respectfully, uh.
We can look it up. We can look it up.
Yeah, we can look it up. And the schedule is on our website. It's continuously on our website and, and, uh, we, we can take a look at it. And if something is not posted, again, it's, it's my apologies, but, uh, we're paying millions of dollars in there for quality control. The DOT is the worst, uh, is the worst inspector in there. Their requirement is extremely stringent. They come and inspect and audit. It's not only WSP, the DOT themselves will come. The traffic, the, uh, the ADA curbs and sidewalks, the four and a half million dollars that we've done, it finished in 2021. We just did the walkthrough with the DOT in there. The DOT is extremely, extremely stringent. Their specifications are like they told you, extremely stringent. Some inspectors, they're, they're, they don't comprehend sometimes what they are saying and they make the problem appear much bigger than what they are.
All right. So I, I just, I don't want to beat over and over and you're going to tell me other projects and everything. So WSP sends out reports? WSP sends out reports to you, only you, or who do they send out the reports to?
They don't send reports to me. There are emails going back and forth every day, about 20 of them going back and forth with each other. It's not, it's not only to me. They're communicating with each other and they're copying me and they're copying other people in my office. Would you like to be copied on them?
Yes. I think the whole council should see it. We're paying them a million dollars and this lady's telling me this. When I just called her today.
Okay, I'll send, I'll send them.
We, we need to know what's going on.
I'll send the text.
Did she put in writing anything that you should?
No, she, we just spoke, I spoke to her.
Did you call her and ask her to send a memo to me?
Yeah, she said I could go down to her office.
No, no, ask her to send it in writing. I don't want to listen to where it went.
I'll call, I'll call, I'll call tomorrow morning.
Well, tonight I'll send, I'll send the letter. I'll send an email to all, all their WSP personnel and, and tell them, tell them what has, uh, what has taken place and the council now wants, wants an update. And as you know, everybody, boys wanted to come and address the council. Everybody wanted to come address the council. I mean, and the mayor and all that stuff. It's complicated project. People are on top of each other. Problems, an old city. We don't know what's in the ground. We know as much as we know what's in the ground. Even when they know what's in the ground, they build sometimes stuff on top of it. And that's where we come in. Said, no, that's not acceptable. So we'll move the water line. Who's going to pay for moving the water line? So we're holding our, our line in there. Some of the things that are said to you, unfortunately, they could, you know, they're, they're true, but that's part of the construction that is taking place and they're held, it's being dealt with. And there were letters going back and forth and we're, you're not going to get paid and you're going to get paid and you have 48 hours to get back to us. And I get, uh, phone calls, seven o'clock in the morning from the bosses in WSP saying, Jacob, we discovered this, what, you know, we suggest this and then we go talk it out. And then I come afterwards, after we make the decision, I come and report it to the mayor. If the mayor is not happy with it, we can change it. This is, this is an ongoing thing. This is what we do, the mayor and I, when we talk is it just, it's an ongoing. And that's only one project of multiple projects that we are dealing with. Sometimes I didn't tell you that the dam, at some point they told me, Jacob, the dam is becoming unstable. We, we, we have a problem. Okay. Where is everybody? When the water level was getting higher and higher. I had, me, I had to go scramble and find a solution. And we had engineers specializing in dams. But that's one of the projects that we're working with. Again, I regret and I, I, I apologize for what has, what has taken place in front of East Main and Academy in there. It's uncalled for. It's lack of organization, lack of, uh, you know, the businesses, they should not have to suffer with this. It's not that acceptable. I said that in front of you to them and I keep saying that. And, you know, the, you know, listen, if there is any, if, if anybody is hurt in there, we're willing to make them good. We're willing to make the business good. That's, that's ultimately what they have told me. Because they don't, you know, they're not there to, to hurt anybody. They're trying to get the job. And again, it is complicated job.
Any questions about this, materials that were unsuitable? Was that fixed or?
No, it's, it's what they have, they have installed material. The DOT, God bless them, they require you, when you build a job, to go have a pile of material, big huge pile of material. The DOT inspector will go test it, take samples of it to make sure it does meet the requirement. It's crushed stone, basically crushed stone. It has got to be, meet the requirement and item four. And then you have to put a sign in there saying, this is approved sign, just a sign, put a sign in the pile to say that this sign was, uh, this pile was analyzed, passed the DOT and that's acceptable. Sometimes you go take another sieve analysis, another pile, um, another, uh, sample of that pile and it, it's a little bit different. Why? Because it's a stone and it's a huge pile. It might be a little bit different. That's not what happened here. Hold on. That's not what happened here. This, they're referring, what she is referring to is at the beginning of the project in there, the first year, it was different inspectors. Different inspectors, we were not happy with them and we kicked them out. Not the boss, not the company, the certain inspectors. We did kick them out. It was, it was a fighting, it's like when I sit down in the meeting, they're almost representing the contractor more than representing us. And I keep reminding the guy, hey, you're not working for them. You're working for us. Make a long story short, these people were kicked out. Certified payroll she's referring to is under those people who were there. Those people who were there, they're ultimately under WSP's control. Our contract is what, with WSP. Nobody's innocent. They are there to protect our interest. So the material that was put under some of the sidewalk was not, was not tested material, I believe, in accordance with the regulation of DOT to put the pile and put them, put the thing on it.
I was sure, but I heard.
You know, it's, it's a crushed stone. It's not like a quick sand. They didn't put quick sand under the sidewalk or anything like that.
I just didn't want them to, you know, we paid boys and two years later, the sidewalks are all breaking.
They're breaking down here. You're breaking down. She has a report from the, the sidewalks that have it over the winter. They're broken. They're cracked. There's issues. There's a report. I'll get it tomorrow.
Good. So, you know, all, any deficiencies in the work will have to be addressed. Any deficiencies. And honestly, uh, some of the work that has taken place, usually within a year, the warranty is over. Because of the length of this project, most of these sidewalks we're talking about, it's going to be three years because it's a three-year project. And there's no final acceptance and then until everything is accepted. So you have much more aging process, much more loading process is going to be taken care of all these sidewalks. They are there. They've got advanced testing, independent of WSP, independent of City of Middletown, independent of, uh, of, uh, of boys, sitting there doing compaction tests, measuring the depth of the material. We got WSP measuring the depth of the material. Everything is being done with eyes wide open, watching everything that happens. If anything that happened in there that's substandard, shame on them, WSP and shame on boys. And we'll get to the bottom of it. There's no money being shoveled everywhere. You're paying about five, 5% of the overall amount of this project. You're paying 5% city taxpayers. 95% give or take, don't hold me to this number. 95% of it is going to, is paid by the federal government through New York State DOT. There are a million eyes watching it. City of Middletown is, is, is the luckiest city to get this much work done in such a short period of time. And, and the quality of the work and the grants that we got. It's a dream. It's a really dream for us to get, to get this far and to get this project and to get it constructed. It's going to be a major facelift, major improvement for the bid, for the downtown, for sidewalks that you guys mentioned all along, all the way out to the city line by almost a quick check. You're going to have sidewalks. You're going to, you're going to have walkable, uh, for, for walk, for walkability in the City of Middletown.
I agree. I mean, I just, when I heard that word, that, that raised a flag for me.
I, I know. That's why I'm upset about her saying this to the council president without elaborating. What is it? Quick sand? Did they put mud in there? Did they, I mean, it's, it's a procedure that was, I'm not, I'm not minimizing it. We've been fighting with it and their boss, the WSP boss is talking to the DOT. And, and the person in DOT in there, because it's very simple. You destroy one sample, take, take samples in there, take the material, outtest it. If you, if you want to, if push comes to shove, you do random samples. I've been doing this all my life. It's, it's not brain surgery. We'll, we'll get to the bottom of it. Yeah.
Anyone else have anything for Jacob? Thank you. Economic development.
Good evening. I just want to remind everybody that the fireworks are on July 1st, um, at Davage Park. And this year we have a Disney tribute group performing for the families and everybody coming up there. So everything begins at seven. We're looking forward to a good holiday weekend. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any question for Maria?
Thank you.
Fire chief.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to let everybody know on June 24th, we have Alex's lemonade stand. Um, going to be at Central Firehouse on the ramp selling lemonade. A hundred percent proceeds go to fight childhood cancer. Um, hope everybody comes out, buys a glass of lemonade, supports them. Uh, I know I'll be there because it helped my son. So, uh, and I'm sure everybody read in today's, uh, thing there, whatever you call it anymore, paper. Um, Fireman Joe has left its perch. He's in Newburgh right now and, uh, article was not too accurate. The color has not been chosen for Fireman Joe. Um, the base will be moved over five feet to the left. I spoke to Rotolo. There's going to be wire, electric run for the lantern and a couple spotlights, ground mounted, shining up on Fireman Joe. Other than that, it's just getting started. So, uh, we got about four months before he comes back. Any questions?
Any questions for the fire chief? Thank you, chief. Police chief.
Good evening. As we approach the Fourth of July weekend, I just want to remind the residents that City of Middletown has opted out of any type of firework use. I'm not allowed to sell them, not allowed to utilize them. So I encourage all of the residents to come out and enjoy the fireworks that are put on by the city. Um, and there's purpose behind that. You know, we're condensed area. We have fires, injuries every year, and we were trying to prevent that and avoid noise concerns, fires, injuries, so on and so forth. So please enjoy the holiday responsibly, but, uh, respect our rules and regulations. We will be out enforcing those, uh, uh, city codes as well. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have something for me.
Any question for the police chief? Thank you, chief. City clerk?
Nothing this evening.
Any question for the city clerk? All right. Public hearings and grievances.
Good evening. Notice is hereby given that the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, on or as near as 7:30 as possible, Common Council Chamber, second floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed rezoning of the following parcel from R2 Family Residential District to C2 Limited Business District to be governed henceforth by the provisions of Section 475-20, Tax Map SBL 41-2-12.1. Section 2, any commercial cleaning services operating upon this parcel shall be subject to the following restrictions. All services must be provided off-site. All large equipment must be stored inside the structure as per the direction of the planning board. This ordinance shall take effect immediately. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given an opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed zoning amendment. The complete proposed zoning amendment is available in the office of the Common Council Clerk, City Hall, 16 James Street, room 12, and on the city website. The public hearing will be conducted in person and live on Channel 20 for viewing. Any person unable to participate in the time of the public hearing may email comments to rmcormick@middletown-ny.com by order of the common council.
Okay. At this time, the public hearing is now open. Anyone from the public? Any councilmen have any issues, comments? Have a motion to close? Alden Massey, second. Alden Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
Petitions and complaints? Nothing. Reports are committees and Alden? Alden Massey?
Two, two quick things. One, I want to congratulate, uh, on Odyssey the Minds Champion Teams from both Presidential Park and, uh, Monhegan Middle School. I think that was a great, uh, thing that we did tonight, recognizing them and, uh, I'm sure they put a lot of time and effort in and, and they deserved it. This final thing I would like to acknowledge and congratulate, the Presidential Park Elementary School students, faculty and staff for the Flag Day program they put on for the American Legion Post 151 and our military veterans. It was a moving and appreciated ceremony and as a veteran, I thank you very much. That's it. Thank you.
Alden Witt?
Uh, thank you. Just, um, high school graduation is scheduled for Friday at six o'clock. Uh, you can get into the stadium as early as four, but at 5:00 PM, the parking lot closes. So you will be able to park at the fairgrounds and you will be shuttled to the stadium, but. But that's, that's where we stand right now. If there's any changes, we will let you know on the district website, middletowncityschools.org and social media. Thank you.
Alden Green?
Thank you very much, yeah, just, I'll echo a huge shout out to those Odyssey of the Mine teams, that's awesome and they deserve every bit of recognition that they get. I do wanna publicly thank Commissioner Tawil and the city clerk, Rick there, for all their help. There was some confusion about garbage pickup with federal holidays and things, and I know we, we spoke about that before, but thank you for, for taking my messages so early in the morning. Sometimes I forget I'm up so early, how early I'm just messaging people, but I really appreciate all your help and thank you and for getting that website matter I brought to the table fixed. Thank you.
Alden Kleiner?
Uh, thank you. Believe it or not, tomorrow night's the longest day of the year, or tomorrow is.
First.
Yes, it'd be the first day of summer, so. Um, I wanna thank the mayor for the updates on the projects that, questions that we get asked so much in our constituents' meetings, so I thank them for the updates. I congratulate all the girls on the winning Odyssey of the Mine teams, it's, it's a great thing for Middletown. Also remind people that June thirtieth is Jimmy Stir and the Friday Night Concerts. I know a lot of people like to go to that before the July first fireworks. Also, wanna remind people too that our next council meetings, we will not have a July fourth meeting, so our next council meeting is July eighteenth. So before then, we will have our second ward constituents' meeting and that will be on July tenth. And then in August, our council meeting will be on August fifteenth. I thank Parks and Rec for, and the Lions Club for doing the fishing derby. The young man who won in his age group also won for the two biggest fish and also won for the most fish. So I don't have his name, but I congratulate him. And, and I think I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you.
Alden Ray?
Um, I just wanna congratulate the girls from OM. I know particularly the girls at Presidential gave up all, a lot of lunch periods, a lot of after-school time, and that's two years in a row now for those girls, I'm super proud of all of them. Um, in other news that is fresh for, for tonight, both our senior boys, baseball and junior girls softball for Lillie are both going to the championship game this week, so I'm just proud of all those kids and wish them well. And that's all I have tonight, thank you. Oh, and to our graduates this week, I'm so sorry, I cannot, I cannot not say congrats to them, you guys have done wonderful things, I'm praying for good weather as always because it always makes it a lot smoother, so best of luck to all of them, that's all.
Alden Johnson?
Gomides, thank you.
Alden John Francois?
Yes, good evening. I just wanna congratulate everyone that participated in the Juneteenth celebration, it was well deserved, very informative, I learned a lot from that celebration. I just wanna thank everyone that was involved in that, especially the bid district, I know they put a lot of work into that and that was great, they appreciate it. Thank you.
Alden Tobin?
I just wanna echo the congratulations to the teams being state champs and going out to the worlds and I didn't catch the names of the coaches, but you know, we appreciate all the time they spend above and beyond to, to help these kids and take their time to travel across the country and it's a testament to the school system.
Okay, no business.
Good evening, we have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson amending the zoning code to change a lot on Sprague Avenue from R-two to C-two.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Tobin, a discussion. Rope.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman, Green authorizing a block party on Saturday, July eighth, on Sunset Street between Highland Place and Highland Avenue.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, a discussion. Rope.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman, Ray awarding the bid for the annual plumbing maintenance work to G. Richard Truex P&amp;H.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Ray, a discussion. Rope.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman, Kleiner awarding the bid for the annual electric maintenance work to Harry F. Rotolo and Son Inc.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green, a discussion. Rope.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman, Ray awarding the bid for the annual HVAC maintenance work to Valverone Plumbing and Heating.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, a discussion. Rope.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?[1646.01]